Fashtas.
He doesn't like it.
Oh, yeah.
Sasha, help. Help, I need your help.
Okay, Sasha, it should be going to YouTube now.
Okay, I'm gonna go click on it.
There's always a delay.
It's not showing up yet, but I'll just keep refreshing.
Yeah, there's always that annoying delay.
I can't lift them, so.
I had that for a long time. I couldn't get my drill. I couldn't do this with a drill. It just hurt. I couldn't get it past there. Now it's peeled or something, I don't know.
Bored out, scar tissue.
We about ready, or what are we waiting on?
And you just called this meeting to order.
Well, let's call this meeting to order then. Yeah, we need a roll call from.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Childs.
Here.
Thompson.
Hi.
And Commissioner Caldwell will be not present today.
My sisters are out in the car.
Probably.
You got some cheaters? I wouldn't like your cheater. I gotta go out and get my cheater.
Oh.
We're gonna recess the meeting.
We need a break.
Now that we BSed our way through the first five minutes.
Thanks for joining us, Sasha.
I wish I could see you guys. It's so much to talk to us that I can't hear you.
No, it's better you don't see us.
Let's say we got the better end of the deal.
You don't see us.
Okay, refreshing, it'll come up.
Yeah, so I ate my last food.
What time is your procedure?
Daughter is this surgical, she can't. She's gonna be. So, it's a principle.
Send Donley.
Said he had a surgery. Right before. I was mistaken.
Funny.
So I killed my own daughter. Seems weird.
It's fun, you know, if she's impaired or not.
Oops.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dad.
Yeah.
I'm the dad from his soldier surgery.
Oh, okay, and everything's working now.
Does she see us now?
I can see you now. I'm totally there.
But I think you're gonna need to mute your YouTube.
Oh.
Don't get the feedback.
Oh, sorry. Okay, hang on. Okay, I muted YouTube, so now I can just see you and I'll listen to you through the Teams link.
Cameras, yeah.
No, that one's not working.
Are you on that one? Back of the room?
Yes.
Can you see the back of Scott's head?
Yep. Lori, can you hear me on Teams?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay, so we got a work session, a letter from the Board of County Commissioners. That's not what this is.
No, that was a letter from Gary Swain concerning impact fees that he wanted everybody to have. That wasn't listed on our agenda tonight.
I'll rewrite that.
Okay. But I think the first thing is, if you don't mind, is to adopt our schedule of work sessions.
So we copy that.
It changed a little bit.
We all have a copy of that.
I would have if I brought my binder.
Yeah, it was in your binder.
I remembered I had a binder when Cindy called me.
It's March 1st, which is tonight, March 22nd, April 19th, May 17th, and then the third Tuesday of every month through this year, unless we have to change one.
Mine says May 17th and May 19th.
Oh, no, we should have had the special, we should have two in May.
That's what I'm looking at.
Oh, that's the.
That wasn't on here. It'll be like May 17th and May 18th.
May 19th, okay.
But that's when we did Wednesdays and Thursday. Now we're gonna do Tuesday and Wednesday.
22nd, 19th, 17th, 18th, and all of this, I'm on Tuesday. Second Tuesday of the month. That's a new copy of this? Is this in action?
No. Action. And then you have your agenda. Items, if you look at that right there, Neil, to your left, right above that list of meetings. Right there, that piece of paper there, right above, it says February 16th, agenda items. This is what we continue to, today, March 1st. So we're going to go through the letter from the Board of County Commissioners first. And answer those questions.
So, Mr. Chairman, the first question that the Board of County Commissioners asks is, willing to take on the task, and how can the Board of County Commissioners? Also say, do you wish, do you have business need for contractor help? It's been my experience that sometimes when an outside consultant is hired, suspect mindset that, oh, there is somebody from the outside telling us how to. I can see the benefits of a professional staff at times, but if it all possible, probably suggest that we try to. And we find that it gets to be a long ask and assistance in drafting, it's not something the staff can do. Somebody who's hired to.
I agree with that. Yeah. More to read about that or something. We get too bogged down and we need that help?
It's there. It's gonna be a lot of work, and I think we'll figure that out tonight as we start to dive into it.
So, you know, our budgeting cycle is, you know, they have to, you know, start putting it into the budget in April, May for public hearings and things throughout the summer, and then, you know, the next budget would start October 1st. So would you like to ask them, because, and then you would have to wait another entire year from October 1st. So you can't just all of a sudden say, oh, now we need money. Would you like us to ask for some money in case we need support for facilitating public meetings, pictures, that kind of stuff? I mean, should we ask for something, just in case?
How do we know what to ask? How much?
McCall hires consultants a lot, and they usually run from 100 to 200,000.
It's 'cause they get sued.
I just wanna make sure this. So, we are, we are clear, I mean, we could be at food, that you think you as a planning and zoning commission are willing to put the time and effort into these public hearings, and you're confident that we can handle it in-house?
What would be the drop dead date that we'd have to wait for?
I would say probably the beginning of May. We should, might have an idea by the beginning of May or June that we might want to ask for something.
So at that point, we could at least have a kind of edit in correction. I want what we want to see.
Or at least know what you want to do. I mean, do you want to rezone the whole county? Do you want to do zoning overlays? Do you like what we're doing with some tweaks to our ordinances? That's something the Planning and Zoning Commission has yet to decide.
Okay, first questions we need to ask. You know a whole lot about agricultural part of the county. I looked at the commercial zoning that we're talking about. I don't like the idea of overlaying commercial on top of agricultural. Driving in, I drive a lot up and down this county every week. And I see it, starting away from the city limits maybe, but therein, I can see commercial coming toward the towns. How's that? It's like I put a boundary. We're not gonna put an overlay. In my mind.
Yeah.
That's kinda how I see if we're gonna be trying to do this zoning setup, we draw a line outside of these towns and don't take the commercial out of there.
So in regards, in regards to that, so let's say we go down the path here for a month. We start to end up with overlays. Do we see that we would need someone to help draw maps?
We have GIS.
We have, we have the access to GIS. I guess maybe a question along your lines, let's say we end up with some sort of. Cindy, do you, you have capacity to help draft that? Or do you have capacity to help write those? It's probably a question more directed to you than, I mean, we'll, we'll guide the ship and help make decisions, but as far as writing the technical stuff.
I, I think I can write things so long as we don't get busy with the other planning and zoning matters.
Should we shut the rest of the?
No. I already started formulating a zoning ordinance. I can go get that for you if you wanna talk about something else real quick.
Well, maybe.
Because, I mean, it's, it's nothing new. I mean, there.
Actually, I spent a lot of time on this the last couple days, and there's, I think there's some fundamental things that we can decide probably in the next couple months. Well, absolutely. We'll really shape what it is we want to try to propose to. I don't think all of the, any good details can be out. As we move forward, it'll need things. That's why I asked you the question of whether, what kind of bandwidth does the P&amp;Z office have to help write that? Assistance of County GIS, even building departments, others that.
It depends upon the depth of input and review you want. If you wanna do a total overhaul of our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance, then you probably need to ask for somebody to do that.
That's maybe the city, right, of the. Sure. That's a, that's a. One of the things I wrote down is, or I think one of the early tasks that we should. Say, does it still make sense to still have vision that you want? In line. If it's not, then we need to make some. That is one of the tasks that I see early on.
Start with this.
I, I actually think, from my perspective, I think 89% of that comp is still reading. It's a little bit surfaceable for a while.
I was reading this about this week, and it was like. Still probably sound, it's just not sure. I know what the Commissioners are wanting to zone. Kinda see that, but again, I'm tending to. This has worked a long time like this. It's like I wanna take baby steps.
The process not working, I guess, is, is the question.
Yeah. Is it just not working, or?
I think it's gonna become, it'll become pretty evident to us. I've made a list of different inputs that I think we need to have, conversations we can have with. Make sure that we're not asking each other. So, we're running the plan with a concept of sort of an override, whether you want to. Changing accountability, standing. Are the other entities? There's about, yeah, I think there's about eight of those meetings.
I have the fire department. Our working group is scheduled for, I believe, March, no, April meeting.
Sasha, can you hear us okay?
Guy, can you hear me?
I can hear Cindy the best. If you guys could just speak up just a little bit, that, that would help me. Thank you.
I'll use your other voice.
My other voice. What microphone are we using?
Use your, use your diaphragm.
You're using that one in the green lights, but that, put that on the table, that will help.
If we talk into this, can you hear us better?
Yes, thank you, thank you. I would play the screen, you guys would hear.
No, I have the fire working group scheduled for the, I believe, the April meeting. I mean, we've historically met with them consistently.
And that's, that includes?
McCall, Donley's.
Cascade, except the.
It's the, all the fire department. I meet with them every month, I think, too.
That's one of the, that's one of the groups that I thought was important.
So how do we determine that what we have is normal? You know, how do we, how do we know that?
Certain criteria that have to be met in order to say, well, this, this system's done something else, or? But what is it that the?
Drive around the county, is it, is it not working? I mean.
What do the appeals look like? I think there's the stats that have been put together to help us with that. Where, where are the potential, where are the conflicts? Yeah, what, what applications tend to fill up all of the chairs in this room? Is there?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been a while.
Is, is there things that end up being appealed to the Board and anything that's overturned? Those things should get sent on changes.
I just think that no matter what you do, there's always gonna be a group of people that aren't happy.
Sure.
Now, Cindy, I'm reading this, I'm down from, of course, Kinstop. Says, we are receiving, talking about the County Commissioners, we're receiving continual input on the concerns citizens have across within the county. These concerns, specific, just general, or?
They haven't actually shared anything but two or three letters with me of all of those concerns. But, you know, there's the ones you see in the paper, you know, Mr. Shake, you know, wanting zoning, David Gallipoli wanting, you know, moratoriums. There, there are people concerned about the way they, I guess, the county is going. I mean, I own a house, how do I protect myself from other people moving into what my area is? I mean, have you seen a bunch of those letters?
The common themes are environmental concerns, groundwater quality, and groundwater. Probably heard this too.
Yeah, that was in Gallipoli's letter.
And just the fundamental character of the ability feel of losing the rural, rural character of Valley County. Those are the, those are the common themes that you see in the comments from those two. That, you know, you can take any climate that happens. I guess in addition to that, I would say short-term risk is a big deal.
Oh, it's a, it's a horrid problem.
It's a really big deal, especially for people who live here full-time.
We, we hear it in here all the time.
So, and maybe to add to the list of concerns, when there's concerns with a proposal, it's a lot of times, it's traffic volume, road or. Fastidious.
All the typical concerns. I mean, those are.
Right, though. That's with every subdivision we approve, that's what.
If anyone bothers to comment, it's.
It's just part of it.
I, you know, I think on a, on a planning front too, and I think it's synthesized down when it's in front of the Board of County Commissioners, and that is, the, the techno-business road is an example of people have historically recognized that as a recreation area during their months. And that is, you know, a road that will be plowed, but new people are coming in, buying, buying property up there, and then coming to the county with the expectation that that road will be plowed now so they can access it full-time. I think, you know, it puts meat on the bones on what the changing nature or character of the county is. That's an example of, of people who have lived here and recreated here, using their businesses, snowmobiles right now. Now seeing those evaporate. Is there a planning tool that, that you can discuss and deliberate over that would say, okay, we wanna protect that? Or protect those, those features of Valley County that.
Sasha, can you hear Brian okay?
I can, yep, thank you.
How do we legally do that? Pay all the property up there? We just have certain areas, like right here, that's where it's plowed to, if you weren't supposed to do property, you're gonna have to snowcat it, so.
That's what's in the ordinance. Yeah. That was decided in court.
I think those are, those are issues that will be, continue to be controversies, and there's, there's some legal practices. Place that I think, from a, from a legal standpoint, best way to defend decisions that say, we're gonna limit the use of this particular piece of property, is that you provide a comprehensive plan that puts people on notice that there are, there is, there's a plan in place for how property's gonna be developed in our county, and so it's eyes wide open. It's where we, where we run into legal problems is where, where we're kinda shooting at the target all the time. That's, that's where I think. To the extent that you can provide some predictability and some notice to prospective buyers and prospective developers that here's the minimum requirements that we're gonna have in place, then it's easier to defend. Probably it's gonna be, it's always gonna be a threat.
So when you say predictability, you're recommending we zone the county?
No.
No, no, no.
That's the way I'm totally hearing that.
I mean, zoning, zoning, zoning is, zoning is the traditional tool that's used to provide that. That is certainly the case, but I do not want to drive policy of this group and, and say that what you have done historically won't continue to work for Valley County as a single zone. You just need to take those, those forecasting issues into consideration and figure out how to make it work, or whatever you wanna do. Whether it's, you own what you got, or, or. But the reason zoning is such a commonly understood concept, and that is, that is what has developed over time as that planning tool that can provide some certainty as to what, what in this zone versus.
That's a tough one. We've got such a hodgepodge, scattered, just like out there that you're talking about. And as that area grows, more houses get built, it's gonna be the same issue. And I, I agree with what you're saying, Brian, as far as of where do they go when you get enough people, and they come to us and they say, why can't we get a road plan? There's, it's gonna be a pushback, and we gotta have a plan in place that's not dried.
They don't plow into that subdivision that's over the mountain, or, name of the town, over there by that horse service guard station.
Patty Flat?
Patty Flat. If they don't plow into that.
Well, that's the, that's the transportation plan.
Sasha's trying to say something.
Go ahead, Sasha.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Brian, can you tell me, or tell us what your perspective is on overlays? And how you think we could potentially address some of these concerns about, and I get it, the character of our community, of our county changing, and discuss on, yeah, I don't know if it's necessarily a, what is working and what is not working. It's more future planning and making sure that people do have some certainty, but also, I really feel like we need to plan for growth specifically. We know the growth is coming as far as like the residential growth, so planning for things like industrial and commercial. And do you think? industrial and commercial, um, and do you think that we would be able to accomplish that through overlays?
Uh, yes, I, I do because it provides, it just provides a different, a, a, a different tool that's more traditionally recognized. You know, Euclidean zoning, as it's developed over, over history, those are, are what people are most familiar with and most recognizable, and it, and it really is kind of vis- a visual representation with rules that apply to those particular zones as we're gonna try and steer growth, you know, industrial clustering in this area, and we're gonna try to steer residential clustering in this area, that's, that's traditional Euclidean zoning. Now, I, to, to defend the, the statement that I made, that I don't think that you're boxed into zoning only. If you had, let's, let's take what you currently have. You have, you have a compatible use matrix that you review as part of the plan review, and if Planning and Zoning Commission can get on the same page as to is this an effective matrix that provides some predictability in what the outcome's gonna be, is that kind of analyze the facts and run it through that matrix, and you have a fairly consistent outcome, then you're kind of accomplishing the same thing, and that's publicly available.
Right.
People who wanna develop land can, can run their matrix and matrices, analyses, and have a good idea. Will what I want to do here work with what Valley County's doing? So I, what I'm saying is you have options, and, and all options are on the table. You're just starting the conversation now, and I'm throwing that out as a, as a, as a, as a useful, as a useful alternative to what tradition, you know, this, the zoning overlays is somewhere in between those two things. It's kind of a hybrid of you kind of get what's good about, you know, the single-use zone with conditional uses versus this more black and white, inflexible Euclidean zone, where it's like, if you're not industrial, you're not getting industrial approval here at all, in the most strictest of terms. I think the concept of zoning overlays has just evolved because people are a little bit dissatisfied with what the outcome is on more traditional zones. Gives you some more flexibility with the zoning overlay concept that allows Planning and Zoning Commission, as an example, to play a more fundamental role in how, how decisions are made.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, one of the things that, when you, when you mentioned, Cindy, one of the things that I was writing down about preparing was kind of specific to what is working and what's not working, and I think it's gonna be really, really important to hear from the public on what they think is working and what they think is not working. And I know that we'll go through kind of the public comment sections of, of this process, but I think that might be a really, really important starting point before we really decide what direction that we're going, but what do you guys think?
It, it's almost like, um, I mean, in, in some senses, Sasha, this is like someone who is elected to represent the people. Do they base their decisions based on who they are, they're elected because of their beliefs or whatever they have? Or do they completely abandon those and do exactly what the public wants? To me, the commission is placed, uh, here because of the people that we are. And I think it's important that we put something forth, because if you, if you have a meeting and there's nothing to look at, there's only the questions of like, what do you think's working and not working? The, the public is, could go everywhere.
Be able to cover it.
You couldn't. So I think it's, uh, imperative on, on us, and I think that's part of the charge that the commissioners are making in their uh, directing to us is, what do we recommend that works and doesn't work? At that, it's in that next little sentence that you stopped at. And I think they want us to make some recommendations about what works and doesn't work, so.
And that's what really frustrated me with their statement. You know, it says, what I, what ideas can you recommend to mitigate these concerns? Tell us the concerns. It's like, come on, guys.
So maybe we go with our concerns. Well, I think, I, I think we know what some of the concerns are. I think when, when we hear opposition to certain proposals, that we can look at the record over the last several years and say, where have the controversial applications been in your timeframe, you're the longest-serving member, I think, of the P and Z now. About that.
You're the old man.
Where are the conflict, conflicts legally? Uh, Brian could point us to, you know, some track records, the, the board could. And we could identify what some of those are, and then try to address some of those in our review of, number one, the comp plan. And I always, I always start out with the constitution, and then I go to the statutes, and then I go to where we're headed, and I think that's, I'm really glad Brian's here because we need to follow what, what is it, Idaho Code sixty-seven?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five eleven says about zoning ordinances, and if we're, I think it's Brian's job to help keep us on track so that those ordinances don't cross that line of either regulatory taking or something else that gets us, gets the county into trouble. But, and then, you know, start there, then look at our comprehensive plan, say, does the comprehensive plan generally reflect the vision that the Planning and Zoning Commission has for Valley County? And if it does, then I think that serves as a guiding tool to create the ordinances, and then you review the ordinances and say, do these ordinances reflect in our, in our minds, does it reflect what that comprehensive plan is stating? And then, then I think it's important that we take a half or a dozen pieces of paper. We write down a dozen or two dozen different types of applications that we get for different types of subdivisions or conditional use permits. And then by agricultural mindset, I'm gonna put it in the cleaning bill and see where it sifts out, you know? You know, in the process, or it's a flow chart. And Cindy likes the hopper.
You like the hopper, I like the flow chart.
And then, and then s- say, okay, it's a, it's a five-lot subdivision, and they're ten acres each, they're in the middle of you know, some intersection, you know, it's on one of the corners of some intersection in the county, drop it in and say, is the result from our ordinance acceptable, and does it follow what the comprehensive plan does? Take the next piece of paper, it's a hundred and twenty-lot subdivision located somewhere else. Drop it in, does it address the concerns we have? Drop in the convenience store with a gas station, put it in, see where it comes out. And I think that will flush out, and, or for me, it would flush out, is our ordinance working and reflecting our comprehensive?
I think what the commissioners are asking for is us to put it on the map, so they can show people, it's right here. And it's like, they want something easy. I get it. They're just wanting us to do the legwork to to show, you know, that we're doing this, and that we're gonna set up whatever zoning you add to, you know, to that. And it's, we don't need to make it too, in my mind, we don't wanna make it too complex.
Agreed.
Although, kiss theory.
I, yeah. I like, I really like the multiple-use system we have now. I think the system works actually pretty well. And I, I said this a couple meetings ago, but I think it is time that we review some of the ordinances to try to alleviate some of the really controversial applications that we've had in the past. And to help streamline the workload for our staff as well. There's, there's multiple things we should address as we go through. I, I like the multiple, I, I like, Sasha, I like the idea of, uh, having some overlays. I certainly don't wanna overlay the whole county and zone it. But I think trying some overlays on like a commercial, an industrial area makes sense. See if it works. If, if it doesn't work, then let's pull it back. If it works well, let's try it on something else, but I, I'm reluctant to zone the entire county.
But how, how, okay, here's a question, okay, say like, uh, chuck handle estates. Do we do an overlay where we look at that as residential? Actually put that on a map? So people can see that. Well, is that what we're wanting to do?
I would, I would say no, but I think our subdivision ordinance should flush out whether that chuck handle estates is an appropriate use for that land. To me, I think that is an appropriate use for that. But we have to assure that, that a subdivision like that is done with a quality outcome. You don't wanna have just hodgepodge roads and things like that in there.
We want a real subdivision, that's, I know that's what people are scared of up here. They don't want it to look like.
I think, I think a lot of our developers, and Sasha, you'll know more about this than I do, but I, from my perspective, I think a lot of our developers, uh, that have done projects in Valley County have done some really nice work. There are a few examples where maybe we should have done something a little differently. But there are some great examples of subdivisions that have made their, uh, place where a residence for people to call home, a nice place.
Yeah.
But we're on these, Jim, so far?
So if you can think about, it doesn't have to be at this con- at this conversation, those things that, you know, those you said the, the bad things that have happened, which ones were the bad things? Well, that's, that's outside our control. You know, and I'm not asking you to put any, you know, thing out tonight. What were the bad things? I mean, what are those things that we need to?
And maybe they were, maybe they were, quote, bad things, uh, let's generalize them and say, maybe they were something that started a a certain type of residential subdivision in a place that maybe today wouldn't sense, and some of the, some of those predate zoning ordinances.
We've only had it since eighty-two.
Right, so some of those were pre-nineteen. Was there adequate, you know, uh, fire protection, you know, water services? Unfortunately, there's been, you know, the districts have been formed, like North Lake, Surton Water have gone in, and they've, you know, updated, updated infrastructure into those areas, but there are still areas where road issues still need to be corrected for some of those old subdivisions. We see those sometimes come up occasionally.
All those were fifties, sixties and seventies. CRs, the West Mountains, all those.
You know, and I, another one, there's, uh, I forget what it was called, it was the Elk County.
Elk County subdivision, I forget, I knew second.
I was gonna go with that. I mean, if that subdivision was before us today, I'm pretty sure we'd require that to be essential. That kind of concentrations of that area. It's, uh, uh, there, between Franklin Building Supply south down to Heinrich Road.
Garden Lane to Heinrich on the other side, without help resting.
West of Non-. I think, I think those older subdivisions, you know, there was no planning. But if there's, you know, if there's other concerns that the commissioners have that we haven't heard about, send, uh, in the form of emails, Brian, that you've seen. We should know about those in the directive.
Yeah, it's, it's just the, we don't have water, we don't have, you know, the quality of water concerns.
Road issues.
The roads are bad. Haven't a lot of fire protection.
Well, I guess, and one thing that we haven't touched on yet, and it's a fairly recent example, is the, the county recognizes the need. They need it, they want it, where, where are you gonna put it? They close it here and it doesn't act right. Anybody that's near it is gonna oppose it. So, so how do you plan for call it heavy industrials, that's what you wanna call it, how do you plan for that? So, so you have a plan, and, and people who are willing to invest in, in making those kinds of community investments for necessary resources that we need to exist, where can they go to evaluate the cost-benefit analysis of whether they're gonna make the investment? Those have impacts, those, you know, those may have more impacts than, than others, and one example, you know, that's, that's been in there controversy, but there's concrete plants or gravel pits or whatever you wanna, whatever you wanna call it. How are you gonna plan for that? And, and then you got that all flushed out, then people who are going to develop residential properties make a better informed decision about is this a good spot for this, or will there be, you know, degradation in property values, residential property values because of the encroachment of, of heavy industrial in these areas.
So we enlisted the commercial and industrial overlays, what I pulled from their previous conversation.
A lot of that can be grandfathered in too, as far as rock pits.
Well, rock pits cover where rock is located.
Right. And, and a lot of that is already developed, for the most part.
A good rock is only so many places in the county. And there typically a pit.
Well, the commissioners might be, you know, what they're hearing is the influx of the people that are coming into this area that have tremendous amount of money. They're used to coming from an area that's well-zoned, set, just cut and dry. And they're used to that.
Have expectations that are allegedly empty mad, but yeah, they're not, they don't translate to Valley County.
Yeah, they want their views protected and things like that, well, you've always said you have to abide your view. You know, we can do things along the Parrot River National Seating Byway.
Have story she is?
Everybody, we had at least three calls today.
A growing, but a growing community needs services.
Right.
And those services need, um, with growth, and so there needs to be a, a kind of a pattern of use that will, you know, theoretically predict where those will go that make, that make logical sense.
Maybe it makes sense that a development that's large enough has a designated area for storage.
Sure.
And parks.
Oh, there you go, opens base, storage.
Oh, and that's been proposed, I mean, Jug Mountain backed up and did some.
Oh, they, they have big storage.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a honey maker for them too. It's, it's another source of revenue.
So probably something that would help. You know, I have down that our next meeting, March twenty-second, I'm hoping all the PNC commissioners will be here. And we can pull up the maps and look, and we'll click on the flood plains, we'll click on the wetlands, we'll click on, you can see where development can actually go in the county. Then you can, we can look at the master transportation plan and, and the roads going throughout the county and, and everybody can get a really good perspective of that. We can go through the comp plan and then the local land use planning act. As listing as we go.
I'm process guy, I'm a visual learner, so I have step one, step two, and at the end we get ended up with what we have. I, I would propose that we, from the get-go, I think Brian's responsibility is to keep us out of trouble and keep the Valley out of trouble when it comes to developments. I preface that on everything we do. It's, it's something I learned.
I think he knows how to speak up.
My years. You have to be bold to speak up. Oh, well, back the truck up. But to me, I think a good place to start is reviewing the comp plan together as a group. Say, do we still agree with it? Does it still make sense? And this is, this is a good exercise to go through. It's flushed out some other ideas that I had. I think there's a, I think there's a number of meetings, and I'll just, I'll run down the list of the people and the agencies that I think we need to meet with and have a conversation. One that was mentioned already is the fire departments with Valdosta Cascade and the SIPPA. I think we need to have a conversation with the Board of County Commissioners on impact fees and/or development agreements. So that, and the reason I say that is when a, a new home is built or, you know, another family dwelling unit comes into the county, there is an additional car or two that goes down a road. And at some point in time, you get enough of those, you start to have a capacity issue. Jeff McFadden will come in and say, you know what? We've got enough traffic at this intersection and we need to have a acceleration lane. Or we need to have a left-hand turn lane. Or we need to take the road that's currently has a paved ten-foot or twelve-foot lane and make it fourteen-foot or shoulder. And to me, those are capacity issues where, Brian, this would be a good one for you to help keep us out of trouble, but those development agreements and those impact fee type concepts should be assessed so that that new development, that new impact for Valley County is paid for by those individuals. And that the tax burden is not placed on the general populace for that new capacity infrastructure. However, the-
And I would ask, I had a gentleman that was going to be here if we talked about impact fees. We're going, I mean, I think if we're going to delve into the impact fee development agreement discussion now, we need to put it on the agenda. People are really interested in that.
Because, and the reason we are interested in it, all of us that are currently, current residents of Valley County, if we don't step up and have some mechanism that has new growth pay for itself, either at the developer level, at the building permit level, or wherever it is, that means that you, the rest of us are going to pay that bill down the road for putting in that left-hand turn lane or adding that shoulder to the road. And that, that to me, I think, is the whole purpose behind a development agreement and an impact. And then the maintenance of that, once it's built, then is all of our responsibilities. But I think that conversation needs to take place with the Board of County Commissioners. And whether we, we ask for that or-
They've been having that conversation for a while. They've hired someone, I told them to do that analysis for impact fees.
For what we're doing with these, these new subdivisions? They just haven't made a decision on anything, discussing it?
No, they hired Galena Summit and Wescott to do the analysis, because you have to go through everything required in the, the state statutes to determine, you know, what your existing capital improvements are, what additional capital improvements you're going to need in the next so many years, eight years, you have to spend it within eight years. It can only be for capital improvements, it can't be for maintenance. I mean, and they're going through that analysis at this time. Contracted with Galena Summit to do that.
But when we have an application come through, there ought to be a condition of approval that says, I mean, right now, we say they need to go talk to the Valley County Road Department. Or maybe we say they have to go talk to the Board of County Commissioners. But maybe that ought to be changed to they enter into an development agreement where they-
Well, it used to. This is a big conversation, Ken. We've been making reports many times on that issue. If you look at the Idaho Code sixty-seven, sixty-five, eleven-eight, it says you can't do a development agreement unless there's a rezone. We've approached our legislators many times about having that changed to a rezone or a change in land use. He tends to ignore us. And so development agreements have to be voluntary. If a development agreement actually looks like an impact fee, like with our old development agreement process, then we probably should be doing impact fees.
But we, the county could do impact fees currently.
We have to go through the analysis.
Right.
And adopt it, impose the ordinance in accordance with, what is it? Eight-seven, eight-one, three.
So, so your authority to impose an impact fee right now is you don't have the structure in place yet.
Right.
So you've got to complete this process with Galena Summit, you have to, you have to put a advisory committee for impact fees in place, and then you have to enact an ordinance that will outline how this impact fee is. None of that's done. So the only way we can legally defend an impact fee is it has to be voluntary. So if you put a mandatory condition of approval in a platform review, and we get sued, we're, we're probably not going to win that one. But if you voluntarily negotiate it, that's kind of a delicate dance. I, I, you know, I'm still kind of struggling with how we're going to put words on the page when the thing comes that subdividers sit at my office saying, you know, how are we going to structure this? I'm going to hold, highlight, underscore, this is a voluntary agreement that's negotiated, not as a condition of approval, but because the developer is willing to make an investment in the structure of the surrounding.
So that's kind of an intermediate step that we have to stay with until we go through the process.
And development agreements really are not available as a tool because we do not have a multi-zone. That statute specific, like Sinda said, specifically says, as a condition of rezone, you can negotiate this development. So if you're in some other county, the valley, and someone comes in and says, I've got this agricultural zone that I want to change to residential zone, that would trigger, that would trigger that statute, but we don't have that. We have, we have a different process, so that tool's not available.
Let's ask this question, if we go to a, let's say the, the next subdivision that comes in the door is land that is currently pasture ground. Which I think there are some of those coming.
There are a lot of them coming, yeah.
And let's say we, once that is plotted or once it becomes a approved subdivision, could we then say that that ground is zoned for a rural residential or multi-family? And change, and actually change it, zone it has residential at that time?
If you've set the zone, you know, and I've thought about that a lot, if you, if you have a multiple use zone and then to do a subdivision, you have to rezone it, it's a different process than what we can have. You have to go through the map changes in the comprehensive plan, and you have to go through an ordinance to change the zone.
I think that's a fundamental change in your comprehensive plan, which would have to be amended. So the reported cases on legality of subdivision ordinance is a big example, not being compliant with the comprehensive plan. Courts have consistently said, you're not boxed in by your comprehensive plan. It's, it's a concept, it's a theory, but you have to be within, you have to be, you can't just be completely ignoring it and doing something completely different. It has to be consistent, but if you deviate from it, you know, I think the courts are going to still support that. But I think if you go from where you're at to, we're going to now start imposing zoning overlays on a plat approval process, concept, that's kind of like a one-off rezone, if I'm hearing you right. But I think you need to, you need to take a hard look at your comprehensive plan and all that out, so.
Yeah, it's a totally different process. It's, it's a comp plan amendment, it's a zone change.
It's like a hybrid.
Well, we do a conditional use permit right now.
Right.
We would have to amend the comp plan, amend the ordinance, and that all has to go in front of the Board of County Commissioners also. Rezoning is not an easy process. What do you think of that, Sasha? The rezone?
Um, I think, well, based on what you're saying, that's a really complicated process. Sorry, I like hearing myself echoing. It just sounds like an incredibly complicated process, although it might be worthwhile to kind of relook at what our comp plan states. Right now, it doesn't sound like that's something that would be really realistic to go forward with.
And Sasha, I, I tend to agree, it may not be the right thing to do now. But let me ask you a question. Do you agree with the concept that the, the new, either the developer or the person who is going to build the house, that's, that's when the impacts happen? Should they be paying some sort of an impact fee slash contribution to pay for the capacity and the impacts they have?
Yes, so I've looked into impact fees a ton, and I've talked to Gary Swain and lots of other people that are really concerned about those a lot of times. I've talked to Idaho Realtors and other counties that are doing this, as well as legislators that are really pushing for this. I fully understand why people are nervous about impact fees, and myself, as, putting my developer hat on, impact fees make me nervous. But there's a really, really specific way to do them legally, constitutionally, is something that's really fair. And I guess the other piece of, of impact fees that makes me nervous is that if you start imposing pretty substantial impact fees on a developer, oftentimes what you see developed is a bunch of whitetails because they can pass all those costs along to their, their buyer. However, I think impact fees are going to be really, really important, and they're the way to do them correctly. Some of the things that I've seen happen, like specifically in the city of McCall, is like they have like a Parks and Rec admin fee, they have all these different fees, those all have to completely go away. If you are going to have an impact fee, you cannot double dip, it's one or the other. And there's a really good way to do that. And depending on the development, and again, this is relooking at ordinances and our comp plan and development agreements and all of that, but they can be back-end loaded so that it doesn't stop the types of developments, so that, so that we have well-rounded developments instead of just, and not, not, not say that there's anything wrong with the whitetails of the world, but we don't, Valley County doesn't want to become one big whitetail, I don't think. So, so that we have this kind of well-rounded development ability because they are loaded on the back end instead of the front end. So, I don't know, that was a lot of information, does that answer your question, Ken?
So, so it does, but I want to, I want to quiz you a little bit more. So I want to understand from a, from a developer's perspective, and I, and I think I know what you mean by loading them on the back end, would be that the developer doesn't have to pay that fee upfront, so it's not included in the price of the lot. But the, the lot purchaser, when they go to draw their building permit for their fifteen-hundred square foot house or their five-thousand square foot house, then they would pay a fee that would be developed for that impact, maybe at, at that time. Is that what you're talking about?
Potentially, that's one way to do it. There is multiple ways that you could potentially do this, you could do it at final plat, you could do it, you know, that's, it's almost like a transfer fee at the purchase price. Ultimately, it impacts the market value of the actual lot, you know, regardless of who's technically paying it, whether it's the buyer or the developer. But there's multiple ways to do this on the back end.
Yeah. I, I tend to agree with that. I, because if you, if you really follow the thought process through, you could have a subdivision, a hundred lot subdivision, platted, final plat, and the developer has to write a check for four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on final plat or at some point.
I don't think you do that with impact fees, I think the impact fee comes in with the building permit.
Right, but, but I think what Sasha's point is that if the fee or the impact is assessed at the building permit, let's say five lots sell, and the five homes are built, and then we hit the two-thousand-nine crash again. And then, and, but there's only five houses there, and the need for the wider pavement or the left-hand turn lane isn't there.
Goes away.
But when the ninety-fifth house is sold or is built in that subdivision, now you've collected ninety-five of the hundred. You have the money to pay for it because now you have the capacity.
You only have eight years, you have eight years to hold that mic. And I had told the, the public that we weren't going to go in-depth with impact fees, because it wasn't on the agenda.
Oh. Okay, well, let me-
You know.
Pick up, pick up where we leave off here at the next meeting. revisit these issues so the public can participate in the conversation or at least hear it.
Yeah, that's, I mean.
So that was two things on my list, I got about six more, but.
So you still want to meet with the Board of County Commissioners, or you have confidence they're taking this through?
I think that we should be, maybe be briefed on it or have a discussion with them.
At least, I think we need to go through a few more of like meetings or whatever before we
Right, right.
get to meet with them.
I think these are just all different to-do list items. I think we need to have a discussion with the sewer and water districts about their service areas. What are their five-year plans? What are their ten-year plans?
Are you talking about?
I'm talking about South Lake that's not formed yet. I think that that conversation needs to take place with them about encouraging them to get something organized to start their system. I think North Lake is in the middle of a five or ten-year planning process right now. What does that look like? Where, where are they proposing areas of service? And when we have an application that comes up potentially in that area, are we communicating with them?
Of course we are, absolutely. Because the sanitary restrictions would have to be released. We send them notice every time.
Do they, do they respond back and say, yeah, that's in our five-year plans area?
They comment back, sometimes. Well, I can't force them to comment to us. You know?
So in, in it's, you know, maybe not just- So in, in its, you know, maybe not just North Lake and South Lake and City of McCall, it's, you know, what are the, what are the other ones? There's, there's a half a dozen other water treatment facilities. Jugg Mountain's got one.
There's what?
Jugg Mountain, Black Hawk, Orstheave.
It's not Black Hawk, it's West Mountain.
West Mountain, yeah.
And there's Jugg Mountain, Jugg Mountain P U D.
So anyway, a discussion with those entities, I think, is important for us to have. I also think there's a discussion that needs to take place with Central District Health and DEQ. We've had a lot of water quality concern issues. What are, what are they, what are they doing? And we always get the form letter from them.
We always get the form letters, says everything's wonderful.
Central District Health actually looks at them, and they write on theirs what needs to happen.
Who are you talking about, DEQ?
Well, both.
Like both of them.
Well, I can ask them, I can invite them. I don't know if they're going to participate with us.
A big one, another big one that I think we need to have a discussion with is with ITD, Valley County Road Department. And with ITD, I think there's a number of topics, one of the, you know, the corridor bits that they're thinking about in the future. What does their plan look like? Does, do the needs of Valley County planning today, are they even aware of what we, what our concerns are?
I think they meet with the board periodically. And they ask them to find salt in the roads and say it's a life safety issue.
Salt in the roads. I'd be interested in talking to ITD about major intersections, plans for left-hand turn lanes,
where it talks to them.
Acceleration lanes, acceleration lanes, road base issues, drainage issues. Are we planning for five-lane intersections, five-lane road, three-lane road? Four-lane segments? Does that look like?
Will we put the gate up and walk it? The last, the last five years has been amazing.
Approaches onto Highway 55, you know, if we allow a certain type of, I mean, they have to get a permit from ITD for an approach. There's already one existing. We, are we, by granting a type of a commercial use along Highway 55, further congesting that pull-out, pull-off situation?
No, they have to get a permit from ITD and ITDE. We'll determine whether they permit a commercial or a residential.
So the reason I bring it up is basically from Lake Fork North to McCall, we've got dozens of businesses, duty service.
47.
Sir, I didn't think there was that many, but there's, so there's quite a few. And there's been a number of accidents where people have been trying to turn. Should we be requesting that as a high priority project? We can make the recommendation to the county commissioners, and then they request it from them. To me, that, that discussion needs to happen with ITD and Valley County Road.
I think that's part of, you know, just what we're doing. Shows them that this is concerns that we have. The commissioner's going to have to deal with it, but still, it's on our radar overall.
Right.
I think it's more about salt than anything else, for some reason. Still, all those are pertinent things that all interlace with it. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with any of that.
You know, if we look at, I, I've tried to look down the road 20 years or more.
You have to do it.
I think I determined it's been 21 since years since I was on this board the first time. It went by really quick.
Well, she's our treasure.
Well, yeah, what's the next 20 years look like? Those are, those are some of the things that I think are, at least I wrote down. I, I still think that we probably ought to talk about a, like, Cascade Basin water lane plan.
What is that?
Uh, dealing with water quality in Cascade. And are there, are there special considerations that we should make when it comes to subdivisions where they're, they are in that basin? Whether they're proximity to the reservoir, it's, or the lake itself?
The Payette River Basin.
Or to a tributary of Cascade.
Everything north of Cascade.
Right. Anything that drains into the Cascade.
That would probably be a conversation with Central District Health and DEQ. That would be part of that conversation.
Is that, I mean, I sit on that group that's also working on that. Cascade, well, with, it's being coordinated through your reclamation, Soil and Water Conservation District, irrigators from Black Canyon clear down to Bayet. So I'm aware of the effort that's, the momentum that's mounting there. They have concern about growth and what's, what's happening and...
So, yeah, part of, part of this letter is, where should growth occur with using science-based tools to mitigate impacts of water quality and environmental concerns? And I asked the board the other day, I mean, is Valley Soil and Water Conservation District a scientifically technical group? And no, they're not. I mean, they shouldn't be making scientific analysis comments.
They, they have been kind of the clearinghouse, the hub, because nobody else has really taken leadership in that. I know back in the mid-'90s, when we had the Cascade River Coordination Council, the Soil and Water Conservation District was kind of the hub that helped coordinate grants, the funding, the research. They had a technical advisory group as a branch off of that that were the scientists that made the recommendations about coal treatment plant fisheries, hatchery, hatchery discharge. That's why those projects were elevated and funded initially. They're going through the same process now, looking at other non-point source pollution. Try to address whether it's agricultural, whether it's, it's, um...
And they're working with other technical groups to do that?
That's, that's, that's in the process. And the governor kicked it off last year with a summit, water quality summit. It was about a year ago. People from DEQ.
You want Valley Soil and Water Conservation District to come with Central District Health and DEQ?
They, they should be there, because they're, they're not, they're probably the, the hub right now that makes the most sense to try to coordinate efforts. They have a keen interest in it.
So, like, when you talk about, or, you hear people just like, Black Hawk, you put them, we have that discussion. Subject tanks are going to be on that side. And when you think about all the ranchers, all the cattle that are drained off the coals to the... Lots of different concerns.
Right. Now, from an agricultural standpoint, they're, they are moving forward with the equip programs and others try to address those agricultural, especially just north of... In fact, I can tell you that they are currently applying for a grant through the reclamation. Put together the studies and...
So I have the fire department, Board of County Commissioners concerning the impact fees and development agreements, sewer and water districts, Valley Soil, Central District Health and DEQ, Idaho Transportation Department, and Road Department.
Yeah, and I think group them together however you see fit, so, because some of those topics are going to kind of overlap.
Maybe development agreements and Road Department might.
Yeah, they might.
I, I mean, I can ask these people to, and Board of County Commissioners, I can tell you work diligently to try to get ITD to put in turn lanes. I mean, ELO Road, they've been working on, I know, for 20 years.
Have they made a presentation at ITD board meetings?
They have made a presentation here. I don't know if they've gone there. It's a lot of talking. There has to be a certain number of, you know, tra- traffic counts, certain number of accidents, and all that engineering analysis. They're not going to do it because it's reasonable. They're going to do it because there's a lot of traffic and a lot of accidents. I mean, the numbers of, you know, traffic down below is astronomical compared to... That's the response they get.
There's a process that they use to put projects on the STIP program. They're not always accident-related, but they're congestion-related. They try to do funding scattered throughout District 3. Sometimes they have demonstration money.
But put it all in, it's very now. But it's all going to filter down to that one-lane bridge.
That's an oops.
I got a request, Mrs. Scotts, Ken. For the Payette River National Seating Byway, Seating Byway Committee, I'm the chairman. What color of concrete do we want sustained for the Jersey barriers?
Rainbow bridge.
I didn't even think of that.
We'd have all, all color palette.
There were like 10 different colors, but they were suggesting gray because that fits in with the natural rock color.
Oh, okay.
I think I will respond rainbow.
Yeah, very good.
Thanks, I needed that.
People would love that.
Wouldn't they, though? What? Lori's not happy.
I just see the protest on both sides, because then it would be taken out completely different way.
Oh.
Well, that's true.
I thought you said grotesque.
No, not grotesque. Protest.
I didn't think about that.
Me neither, sorry.
I just saw colorful.
Thinking of the Rainbow Bridge. Scott's back.
Well, I mean, how much further we want to go than that?
Well, we need to actually talk about...
Subdivision types?
Yep. That worksheet. We can try to get some process together for writing that. Everybody have their little worksheet?
Keeping prepared.
I was that child, too.
You were the unprepared one, the one that took care of everybody else?
So, I, I mean, we're going to talk about the hopper.
Right. Sasha, do you have yours done? Your chart?
Flow chart?
Thank you.
Let's see. Let's see if filled out. Okay.
So... I've got more of you over here than me.
I'm just teasing, yeah.
I think she's prepared.
It's the blue tab.
It has all the short plat, long plat, that one?
Yeah.
The straight and flat, up credit. It's an interesting exercise to go through, figure out.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was like, I've got all this stuff before, and yeah, this is interesting.
So, you know, the, the county commissioners adopted a zoning change that you had recommended.
So no splits in, have Clark...
Everything has to go through a subdivision process of some sort. What do those subdivision processes look like? Administrative plat, that would just, you know, be me as the administrator. I'm reviewing, I mean, how many lots should I be able to approve? What type of access? I mean, so if we start here, we might be able to get through a road tonight. I mean, what are you comfortable with just administrative, for the local, what do you like?
So, as we start this under the, there's a, and I cannot remember where I read it, but there's the stuff that is listed out in House Bill 643 for like inherited splits. Where is that found in our ordinance?
It's, I have 10. 10 dash 1 dash 3 C.
3 C. Okay. Those are the exceptions to subdivisions.
So those exceptions are a readjustment of lot lines as shown on a reported plat or the assessor's plat. Someone wants, you know, has two pieces of property and wants to move the line over, they can do that so long as they both stay in compliance with minimum lot sizes. Okay? That's the basis of that. An easement providing rights for ingress egress, utilities or drainage for one building site across any portion of a parcel of land which does not transfer title to any portion of the parcel. Just saying that an easement isn't splitting the property. Division of land for financing or mortgage purposes only where the entire parcel remains in one ownership. So if you own 40 acres and your bank says, "We're not going to finance 40 acres, we'll only finance one acre", you have to split that one acre, wait, one acre off for financing purposes. We will allow you to do that so long as that one acre and 39 acres stays in the same ownership. If, if they sell it, then we don't recognize the one as a legal building parcel. That's always our hammer. You don't get a building permit. And then the only way to cure that would be to record a subdivision plat.
Right.
The next one is allocation of land in the settlement of the estate of a decedent is provided in a will or court decree for the distribution of property in the settlement of an estate to a decedent. So if someone wants to leave their four children, a piece of property, they can do that in the settlement of their estate. Have to say their estate, "I'm leaving, show this, John that". And we're pretty flexible, you know, with the specificity of that. I mean, if you can see that, you know... I mean, if you can see that, you know, it was left and the court decreed it in the probate for the settlement of the estate, we allow that.
It's a split.
No matter what the split would be.
Well, it would have to meet the minimum requirements. I mean, we can't split, they can't split one acre into four pieces and expect to get a subject system on each one of them. There was one done up by Black Hawk Lake where they split it, where they didn't provide access to it. So they had to go in and plot a road to the properties. They can't get away from the minimum standards by doing that.
Good. And number, so number five, the division of parcels, that went completely away.
That went away.
So that's gone.
Next one is allocation of land or pathway that can be used by the public. So if someone wants to split off something for a pathway, so some public agency has to take it on and they don't want the liability, we're fine with that, as long as they maintain, you know, minimum standard for their moving parcel. Any acquisition or division of land by a public agency. So if county purchased a piece of property.
For snowmobile parking.
Sure, why not?
Or maybe an eminent domain.
Or eminent domain type thing, it doesn't make your parcel illegal to the government.
Right. So if they take it, it makes it smaller than the minimums?
We would still recognize the problem. We have to look at it. I mean, if they had 10 acres and we took nine acres or nine and a half acres, left them a half acre, we would probably make that billable if they could get a subject system. You know, because I would hope. Separation of lots to their original configuration from a previously plotted subdivision shall be allowed so long as it does not create a violation of setbacks. So if two people combine, if a person combines two lots in a subdivision for taxing purposes, they can split it back to the original configuration of the lots. Because it really, I mean, when they combine it for taxing purposes, it doesn't really get rid of that line. But if they have two rural parcels that haven't been in a subdivision plat and they combine those, they cannot split those back out without doing a subdivision plat. I mean, a lot of those are just old meets and bounds descriptions, they might not have roads. They could be allocuette descriptions, I'm sorry, you know, the northwest of the northeast of the, I mean, they've never been under any sort of review.
So these exceptions for a subdivision, officially is permitted. Do you handle those now within your office? Do you sign off on those or they just don't need to do anything?
It's an exception to the requirement for a subdivision. Sometimes they want me to write a letter and say, yes, you can do that.
So you, that's really an administrative procedure that you just do because it's the way the ordinance.
It doesn't require anything. I will tell you that these differ from other counties and other jurisdictions in the state. I mean, most of the planners, you know, because this came up in conversation with a number of them, because if their recent House bill was proposed, they think it's horrible that you can give your property to your decedents without any sort of review. I mean, that one just amazed them. You know, so what Valley County does is different than what other counties do. Now, this is just what was actually started back in 1971. I mean, some things have changed here and there. I used to say, number five used to be a division of land into parcels containing 20 acres or more for agricultural uses. Well, everybody was splitting it into 20 acre pieces and then coming in the next week wanting a building permit. So we took out that for agricultural purposes because we couldn't track that. That answer your question there?
What kind of, it's part of the discussion, or administrative plats.
Well, administrative plats, if you keep going in the ordinance, act two. 10 dash 3 dash 1. This is where the administrator determines what type of plat it is. If they come in and they haven't met one of those exceptions, and they say, I've got this piece of property, this is what I want to do. I look at this and say, oh, you can do an administrator plat.
So let's talk about a split, because it says in here that those splits are. Where the, well, I think it's the same language here, to maximum of four lots, but is there a size restriction on those?
Yeah, that's in Title IX. That's under the land use portion, conditional uses, residential.
Okay.
This, all this does is tell you how to do the plat and when a plat is required. Title IX tells you minimum lot sizes, densities and things like that. Go to 10 dash 5C dash 1. Or just 10 dash, 9, I'm sorry, 9 dash 5C. It talks about minimum lot areas, minimum lot sizes, minimum frontage, minimum setbacks.
What is it, 10 what?
A 9 dash 5C. Dash 1.
That sets parameters that you're going to.
Minimum standards. Areas, lot sizes, densities, frontage on public or private roads.
Those are the things that they usually include in the staff reports.
So when I read this, I'm off of this red line edition one. Administrative plat, administrative plat can be approved for an original parcel that is being split into a maximum of four lots. And then, so the question is, they still have to follow the 9 dash 5 lot sizes? So basically, let's, let's take a couple of examples. There's a 40 acre parcel and the owner wants to split it into four 10 acre lots. Under the administrative procedure proposed, or maybe current, currently, they can come in and as long as they have the minimum lot size, setbacks, that kind of thing. Do you currently sign up on that? Is that currently an administrative?
But if you currently, I mean, it has to be an original parcel. Maximum of four lots. It doesn't require a public hearing is the big deal. I reviewed as the planning and zoning commission. The agencies and neighbors are notified, wrote, before the recordation in order to assess the impacts. I can determine that if they say that there are impacts, that they need to go before the planning and zoning commission. It says each lot must meet the land use requirements in regard to lot size, street frontage, emergency access, central district health requirements. So they still have to get those sanitary restrictions released. Access to utilities cannot be on severe topography or have geographic concerns, such as wetlands, floodwater areas. And they have to do the topo map. And they can be filed with CCNR. So basically, it's the four lots, they've met all the standards, they're not the floodplain. They have sanitary restrictions released, they've paid their taxes, must be signed by the county surveyor, county treasurer and the board of county commissioners, central district health. The only thing eliminated in the administrative plat is the planning and zoning commission.
We've had, cancel?
Yeah.
How many?
Not very many.
So, and correctly if I'm wrong, but this red letter edition is current ordinance, is that right?
Yes. What I did was I pulled together how they draw the lines.
Right, okay. I wanted to make sure that that's current.
That's why I made, instead of just saying that number three shall comply with requirements in section 10 dash 3 dash 3 dash 2, 10 dash 3 dash 3 dash A, I pulled those sections forward so you can see what they had to comply with. I don't know where my red letter.
This was in our book, our lookbook.
Yeah, mine is weird, mine didn't have that.
Yeah, this is.
There it is.
Hey, did you talk about how many original parcels or lands that have been subdivided?
I've got the maps over here.
That's these.
We have sent these to you.
This is, yeah.
Well, I don't know how many original parcels there are, that would take a lot of research.
Yeah.
I don't know that there are a lot of original parcels out there anymore, because that date was April 29th of 1970.
I have a few of them.
These are. But they're not, there aren't a lot anymore.
Right, there's very few.
Right. I mean, I could ask.
When did you saw an administrative plat come through?
Well, mostly it's, it's just for things that are kind of outside of that. A true administrative plat might have had two.
Right, right.
Yeah. That's why I think we need to change up some of that, doesn't really need to be an original parcel, probably not. I think that's where we're gonna, I think we need to ease up for the administrative plat and not make it a record or survey process like the city of McCall because those aren't followed through on. But, you know, something simpler that I can review.
Right. I have some ideas about what we should allow you to do. Sasha, I'm going to throw out some ideas here, just to get some discussion going.
Is that on that chart?
Yes. So, minimum lot size, I wrestled with this one for a while. I originally said, well, maybe a minimum lot size should be five acres. And I said, well, what about 10, 20? So I'm not settled in on that yet.
Okay.
For the administrative plat?
Okay, so, but if you do that, you know, we're going right back to where we were.
I know, this is for discussion only.
Okay.
I want to hear the pros and cons.
We need to answer the rest of the questions. Do they have, can they have internal public roads?
I said no.
Can they have private roads?
I said yes.
So they can do, and then what about the county engineer? I don't think the administrator should be approving new roads.
So I took that same concept on down to the, I added a couple more criteria down here at the bottom. And on the bottom of our checklist, Sasha, I added road and bridge approvals. I added county development agreement concept slash impact. So I'm going to be pushing that issue. And then there were some other things that I added as well, but I'll get to those in a bit. When it comes to the, like, the fire standards, do external off premise roads have to be built to fire standards? I was yes on everything, all the way across.
Okay, so let's, let's hit and miss here, okay, on some of these, some that you think are mandatory.
The reason I said yes to all of them, because regardless of whether it's a subdivision or a, something in the back country, when somebody calls 911 and I've got a fire or I need an ambulance, that fire truck's got to get there, be able to turn around and get back home.
So does there?
You're talking about anything that we would, from home, whatever, back in, doesn't matter, there's got to be an adequate safe road.
Access to fight fire.
Access for firefighters, firefighters to get in and get out.
I can't remember the name of the subdivision, we just had it here about two months ago up on, by the eight ranch that, that long narrow subdivision that went up, went up into the mountains. Had a longer cul-de-sac.
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember the.
Huckleberrys.
Huckleberry.
Yeah.
Huckleberry, yeah. To me, that was a perfect example of that road needed to be adequate so that the Donley or McCall Fire Department, fire trucks could get up there, turn around and then cul-de-sac, fight a fire and get back home.
And, yes, that's why we have private road standards.
Right. That's something.
Which is different than fire standards.
Why? Why should they be different? Which one's more restrict, which one?
Private road standards are more restrictive than a fire code.
So you have to build a better road for a private road standard?
Yes.
Or is it?
Well, with a private road, you have a 70 foot, I believe you have a 24 foot road surface with a certain base built up, a certain, you know, depth. It's on the Valley County website, I am not, we can find it, I'll get it for you.
So what are the, the fire ones?
But the fire.
They have a grade restriction.
They have a grade restriction and they have, it has to be able to hold up a fire truck. And then every certain interval, there has to be a pullout so that someone can pull over and let the trucks go by. So there are different, fire code is different than private road standard.
It's interesting that the fire code standards are not as robust as road going to a, right. Their standards.
Who's had that pullout?
I can get the fire code. And, I mean, that would be a good discussion for the fire department.
Right, because they're always writing on their comments about a subdivision that one of the things that they recommend is that all roads shall meet the fire code standard.
Oh, they usually say Valley County standards.
Because it's a better standard?
Yeah.
Okay. But if there's certain things that the county road standard doesn't cover with the fire law, shouldn't the county adopt some of that?
No, the, I, my, I believe the fire code is a lesser standard than the private road standards, which are a lesser standard than the public road standards. If someone, let's take, oh, a piece of property out in High Valley and say, High Valley Road was just there, wasn't a public road, private road. Would you require somebody out there to rebuild that road to a private road standard or a fire code? Go into these, I mean, go up Anderson Creek where they split all those 20 acre pieces And then the spur roads that go down that were public, that they split 20 acre pieces off of, they're all brushed over. So those have been built to a fire code or a private road standard? That's what we're at, I mean, what is the minimum for a road?
I guess the point that drives it for me is having been a fireman, volunteer fire guy. I want to be able to get the fire department in there without. I want to be able to get the fire department in there without a struggle. They gotta be able to turn around and get out.
So, for now, we'll just put a yes there across the.
I. Well, I mean, if we're.
What if I'm approving something? What if it's an administrative plat?
No difference. I think it should be the same.
Okay. We've got one line filled out.
There you go.
And, oh. Okay, hang on. Did you talk about minimum?
No, we're skipping over that one right now.
Okay, are we still talking about four max, or the maximum number of lots is still four?
We haven't settled on anything.
So, I was wavering between two and four for administrative plat.
And I was going to ask, what if they have consecutive parcels? So, can the same person do a four lot administrative plat? Oh, now I have a remainder of this. Can I now do another four lot?
No. So, so. Yeah, you're thinking the same way I am because what is, what's the workaround? You know, if I'm a developer, Sasha, what's the workaround to get around this? How do I, how do I break up my ground and do, I'm gonna nickel and dime Cinna to death by going in for administrative plats, one this month, one next month, one the month after. Pretty soon, I've got a fifty lot subdivision.
Adjacent property. That would be a qualification in your hopper. And not own adjacent property.
Or adjacent property cannot.
It'd be important to, the use of plat notes is gonna be really important on, I think, on administrative plaits. Because eventually it won't be Cinna. It'll be somebody else, and they'll need to be able to, to see that and recognize it and make decisions without tons of research.
What's trying to do?
Sue just can't retire.
Well, at some point, you're not gonna wanna do this anymore, Cinna.
No, but, I mean, yeah, how do we get around the end run? Yeah, on an administrative plat.
Maybe it's a time. Maybe you say, well, you can't do any more of these for a year, ten years. Twenty years. Or whatever case may.
Legally do that, or just tell them you gotta get to the board.
Or maybe the first ones for free. Next ones.
Next one comes to.
Okay, so, I'm gonna throw it out here. So, let's say Neil owns an eighty acre parcel here in the county. He owns a hundred and sixty acre parcel over there, and he's got a forty over here. He comes into Cinna and says, I'm gonna do administrative plat, get my four lots here, go over there and do four more there, and I'm gonna go four more over here. That'd be a lot.
Some.
Adjacent.
Okay.
Then that could be all straight.
Or two lots. We're such a fun group, right? Would anybody wanna do an administrative plat?
I know, they don't get, they don't get to see us.
I know. We should just do away with it.
So, four. Let's, you wanna go with four right now?
I got four right now on mine.
And they, and they have to?
Yeah, I thought let's do three and five before I even read the ordinance, so, yeah, four is fine for me. But, okay, we'll go back to that.
And I'm gonna put no adjacent land for now.
Yeah.
I'll have to write this up, and then you guys will look through it. Can they have internal private roads?
I said no.
I didn't understand why on the no, though. Because if they wanted to maintain those, why not?
Well, they're four, it's four lots.
Right, so, I mean, they, it would be most likely that they wouldn't want to do that, but I suppose if they did wanna do that, why would we tell them that they couldn't?
Internal private.
Because we're putting little
Public.
Private roads all over the place without any review. Except by.
But if they make ten of them in there to the, you know, to the Valley County private road standard, would it matter?
Not if I have fire department review and approval, because remember, the cul-de-sacs are only supposed to be nine hundred feet long unless they have planning and zoning commission approval.
Yeah.
That's a lot of responsibility.
That would be the, that would, that would be the determining factor is how long it was, because otherwise, they'd have to go through the P and Z, the C and P process. So, and maybe that just doesn't make sense.
But then, you know, I can see maybe an eighty acre piece out, you know, they've got you know, some property out along the highway, and they wanna break it into four parcels, four twenty acre parcels going away from the highway, and they just want to plot a road up one side.
Go four.
So, yeah. Is that something the planning and zoning commission should get involved in? I would think so, especially coming off the highway like that.
It'll be a public road.
Well, it'd be a private road.
Well, it's, you're gonna have to work it.
It could be private.
Yeah. Privately maintained by the HOA and all that stuff.
Well, it's just like my road. There's four of us, and we own the road.
It's a curving road, and it's pretty back there. And it was smaller lots. It has, I mean, you guys provided for maintenance. But through the planning and zoning commission, and the planning and zoning commission determined if it was compatible with the surrounding land uses. Administrative plaits, there's not gonna be, not gonna be a compatibility. It's just going to be for like, the whole point of the administrative plat initially was to provide for people to split up their ranches.
That's, that's where I tend to think this should apply, is for fairly limited use.
Hundred and sixty acre lots, eighty acre lots?
For the administrative plat? That's why I started out at five, and then I went to ten, and then I went to twenty.
But, but I guess the other thing that I was kind of thinking about is if we've, if we've determined the maximum number of lots, it may not make sense for them to all be kind of equal sizes, so I guess that was where I was kind of questioning the minimum lot size.
Okay, so if they had eighty acre, and they want to do three one acre pieces along the road, just leave the rest as a remainder?
Sub subdivision.
Yeah, that would be a subdivision. Or would that be an administrative plat? Did you follow me on that one?
Yeah, I did.
I could draw a picture.
See, in, in mine, that goes over in the next column under short plots.
Yeah, I, I guess that's where it really does start to.
I went to.
I guess, well, and so, Cinna, are you, knowing that this was originally, the administrative plat process was originally designed for people to break up their ranches, most likely for their family members.
But there's an exemption for that.
If you die.
Well, you're not gonna live forever.
What, Sasha?
So, do you feel like we should be going back and redefining what the purpose of the administrative plat is before we start answering these questions?
Yes, I mean, is it administrative plat to help those people that have, are longtime owners, family people? Are these to just make it a simpler process? I'll tell you, I mean, I wish Brian was here. He has a concern with planning, with preliminary plats not going on to the board of county commissioners for approval. He thinks all preliminary plats should go then on to the board of county commissioners.
What does he think about administrative plats?
He hasn't said anything about administrative plats.
But your little chart here shows that all these go to the board of county. Yeah, top.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, well, they sign it, but what I'm talking about is when you approve a preliminary plat, they can go get their engineering and build their roads and, and build it. But he thinks the board should approve it before they get to that point. So, it'd come to planning and zoning commission, and your guys' decision would actually just be a recommendation. And then they have another public hearing for the county commissioners.
Because that's what this, is that, is it really all about the statute? Or it is?
Well, the statute says that the board of county commissioners have to make the final decision on subdivision plaits and ordinances, and he interprets that, that
Not being.
The preliminary plat is the final decision.
Because it's constructed?
So, anyway, but we'll talk about that another day.
I think overall, to me, I've thought of the administrative plat as something that is probably not used very often. Like you said, now you've seen, what, two in the last ten years?
Three, I believe.
That's just because we went into a gray area.
Like this.
Well, okay, so I'll describe the administrative plat we did. They had two lots, a lot line going up the middle of it. And they didn't want to have to pay two sewer hookups because there's no way they were ever going to build it. It was in the sewer district, so they just wanted to turn it into one lot, and the sewer district said, no, it's two, even if you combine it for taxing purposes. So, they did an administrative plat to officially change the boundaries. So, they wouldn't want to have to pay one sewer hookup. It was up in.
Is that the Royal Scotland?
No, it's down here on French Creek or something. Administrative plaits should be able, you know, to combine lots too.
I, I think there might be a, a reason if it's, they're not adjacent land, it's, you know, maybe the four lots is fine. I, I, that's why I started out with five, then I went to ten, and then went to twenty acres, because I'm thinking, okay, here's that, you know, family situation. They've got a hundred and sixty acres, and they want to give the two kids or three kids a parcel, each a parcel. Are they, instead of the one acre things, maybe they're the ten acre. Come into Cinna, they see her, and we say, yeah, those are four.
And that's why it said original parcels. That was the key.
Yeah, that was original.
An original parcel, July twenty ninth of nineteen seventy.
And that would capture those individuals who tried to get. What do you think, Sasha?
Um, the more that we're kind of talking about this and the original purpose, I kind of feel like there's gonna be so few of these that I don't even know if this one's worth really spending our time on. You know what I mean? Like, it's, it's not, I think most people are gonna end up needing to go through the short plat, long plat, or off-grid plat. And what I guess my big question would be is, Cinna, from your perspective over what you've seen over the last, you know, five or ten years with administrative plaits, I would want your opinion on what we should change on this administrative plat, because we're just really not gonna see that many of them. And so, what do you see as being appropriate or needing to change here?
My, I, I will have to think about that. I, I wouldn't want to include roads or construction of roads. Unless it was nine hundred feet or less. I mean, a short cul-de-sac. Yeah, I mean, then they have to get engineering and all that stuff. Um, I would not want that person to own adjacent land. And I would want it to be allowed to combine lots.
Combine lots.
Combine lots.
So, the reverse of a subdivision.
Well, if they have like three subdivision lots, and they wanna make one without any lot lines whatsoever, they can combine that using an administrative plat. Now, what about power? Should an administrative plat, should they have to pull in power?
Give to the kids.
Cinna, what do you think based on what you've seen? Like, do you feel like that's appropriate?
Does it mean that they have to actually pull it in, or is it, is it available in the area? Because I viewed that as, is there a power line in the proximity?
A distribution line? And a transmission line.
Oh, not transmission. Is there a power line in the area? I thought.
What if it's, say, down on Gray Lane? And there is no power around, I mean, the power goes down Round Valley Road, I think.
Well, is the intent of the, the split to build a house?
Yeah. So, the kids can build a house.
Then you're in the off-grid. The off-gridders. Well, shouldn't that, as far as the power, if you're splitting it or that's, and I guess in, in, I thought processes.
But that's not how other subdivisions are. They, the developer has to bring power to it.
Yeah, but this is just an administrative plat, small time.
Right. Then your buyer goes out and wants to buy that lot, because this isn't going to the kids, you know. And then that one person that want, bought this lot, oh, I'm gonna call out a whole power and get hooked up. Well, power's ten miles that way.
Oh, yeah.
So, what, I mean, how much do you want to protect potential buyers? I mean, I guess that's your question. Do you want to allow?
It's tough, isn't it? Buyer knows what they're, what they're buying.
They should.
Research.
Go ahead.
I will just tell you that they don't.
They don't.
Right.
Oh, I'm sure.
They should.
I mean, they're. They assume.
Yeah. And they're, yeah, but I would say, um, Cinna, if you feel like the purpose for this is for, you know, for resale, I don't really think it should be an administrative plat. And I know the city of McCall does it. I've gone through the record of survey process many times. It made a ton of sense. But it was also, we, I still had to meet every single requirement. And so, I don't know that, that it makes sense to have an administrative plat where you wouldn't have to, you know, meet those same types of requirements with that end, end user in mind.
That was the line of thinking I had as well. That's why I said yes to power.
Okay. Everybody else agree with that? They can always come to the board, the planning and zoning commission, apply for
A variance.
Something else.
Right.
But coming to me for just the stamp of approval should be a no-brainer.
Right.
Shouldn't be a way around. So, okay. Sanitary restrictions released. Yes.
I said yes if. I, I have a lot of yes comma ifs.
Cross the board.
What, what's your if, Ken?
So, here's my if.
Startle me.
Uh-huh.
Startle me.
Startle you. Because I, I know of one that is going on right now. Who has an application planned.
A relative, yeah?
Relative of one. First cousin, second cousin. Uh, sewer and water was three hundred feet away. And I thought, okay, yes, they can do a sewer system or a, a, so a tank drain field. As long as they were a greater distance away from central sewer.
Sanitary restrictions. Includes sewer or septic.
So I took that sanitary restrictions as septic only.
Oh. I did, I did put septic there. I'm sorry. Yes.
So is it, should I have been viewing that differently?
You're, you're absolutely correct.
Central sewer zone, that one, that's there.
Right. And so on that one, I said yes if, and then I just threw out a quarter mile. If there's a, if there's a central sewer line within a quarter mile, or maybe that distance is wrong, maybe it's 300 feet, or whatever it is.
I think states, can we just go with state statute?
It's 300, isn't it? And if, you know, if that parcel's within 200 feet of a central sewer system, they ought to hook up. If it's greater than that, whatever that distance is that we say it is, then yeah, they can do a septic.
And Central District Health wouldn't approve it if it was that close. I don't believe Central District Health would really set atary restrictions for a septic system if sewer was within 200 feet.
That's why I said the yes if.
Is that 200 feet from the property line, or 200 feet from the individual?
200 feet from the property line.
Individual water system, yes.
I did yes if on that one, too. If they're, they're close to central water.
Okay, so let me ask you this. What if it's something like jug handle water system? And they won't sell to other people? You can come by Black Hawk, and they won't, they won't sell your water.
But that's private, isn't it?
Yeah, those are private systems.
So is that, is there a way to distinguish that? Are you talking about is there, is it within, so close to, how are you talking about? Well, I guess I viewed it as a, like a community.
Well, for growth, I mean, Meadows at West Mountain, they won't sell you water either.
Would they? If I'm the person that buys the, the little lot, and it's an administrative plat, I've got a 10-acre parcel, and it's next door to a central water system, whether it's privately owned or publicly owned. I have a choice to approach them, to say, hey, would you be willing to sell me a hookup? So I don't have to drill a well, because a well's 1,000 bucks, or $30,000, and maybe a hookup's only 10. So maybe, maybe it says something to the effect of, yes, they can do individual wells. But maybe we should encourage them to
If denied by the
If denied, then they can drill a well.
I remember these things.
If denied.
It, it makes financial sense.
Yeah, I would be asking.
I would, too. Whatever the number is. You're the plumber. Are you, you're electrical plumbing at the same time?
Yeah, it's pretty much. It all flows.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And I can chew my fingernails.
So the same, and so the central sewer, uh, central water really isn't a consideration on administrative plat. It's not required. Unless they're within 200 feet, and then they have to approach the provider to see if they can connect. How's that?
Sure. Makes sense. That's common sense.
Yes. Bared water tanks. In an administrative plat, I don't think that that was part of the fire department's list.
Yeah, I was trying to think if that was.
But we'll check with them.
Did that, those always came from the fire department, didn't they?
Yes.
Those requirements.
And we went through that list, oh, four or five months ago. Up to a certain, they didn't require, I think it was like five or something. Forty or some, they wanted central water, 15.
What pays for those tanks when they rust out?
Their fiber.
Probably the HOA.
It's a level that were put in earlier.
Probably true.
Because I watched them.
See fire mitigations plan?
I bet yes on all of it, all the way across.
Well. I'm so tired of it.
I think that's just because, just because where we live.
Proposed administrative plats of less than five lots are accepted from that. And proposed subdivisions with lands less than 20% of forested. What?
What size subdivision, what size plats are, are exempt from that?
Um, administrative plats of less than five lots.
Oh, are, are exempt from fire mitigation plans?
Yes, and proposed subdivisions with lands less than 20% forested. So if you're out in the middle of a field, do you really need a forest management plan?
You probably should have something that says.
We, I would know this. I hope you guys would, too.
But then there would be something in the folder, though. Then they add all their landscaping. Right?
With all their trees, right?
I don't know. Maybe not. Does having a fire mitigation Does having a fire mitigation plan help them? Whatever the purpose of the fire mitigation plan is. I guess that's kind of
What does, what does it, what does fire mitigation plan, uh, income? It's mainly forest?
Yeah, it's trimming your underdog.
Clean up the fuels.
Clean up the dead fuels.
Emergency exit, exit, I mean, how do you get out of here? You know, if they cut down timber for roads, they have to clean it up. They can't just leave it.
Ending diseased trees.
Water supply.
Stuff like that. I had to do well. It's what we do well.
Sure.
So you want to require one if over 20% is forested? I mean, but if they have, you know, just a little patch of trees, do they have to?
But what if they're adjacent to a big patch of trees in subdivision, fire starts?
So, what do they, are they going to go to their neighboring thing up their forest?
That's always fun.
For the view?
Yeah, for the view.
Oops.
So on administrative plat, four lots.
What if they're mid-lots?
I think long yearlines, if it's got a significant amount of trees on it, they probably ought to take care of.
Over 20%? That's what the ordinance says now.
40%? Probably depends on the location of the trees. Adjacent to neighboring, or their house, or whatever.
I mean, we only have one guy doing them.
He does a good job, though. John does a great job. He does excellent.
I think there might be someone else. So, yes, they have to have a fire mitigation. Fire hydrants, no. Okay. Covered a lot of stuff today. And see, so next time, we'll write this up. And then, of course, they have to have the county surveyor sign, county treasurer, board of county commissioners, and central district health.
So let's go back to the, we, did we talk about the lot size?
No, we didn't.
We didn't zero in on that yet.
So, weren't we going to say original parcels?
So is there a minimum lot size?
One acre. That's in, I don't mind. So if it's an original parcel, something that predates April 29th of 1970, they can split it in four lots.
No smaller than one acre. Would that be the minimum lot size then?
Yes. So they'd have to have four acres. For lots. Right now, they can split that one time.
Before you can say you can do that on a straight.
Original parts can be split one time.
So I think we have
Now you can do it four.
I think we have an application coming up that would meet this criteria.
Which one?
Or what? Rich.
Oh, that one's, um, eight lots.
It's eight. What if it was four?
If it was four, you know, it has an internal road. And I think we should add fire department to this. Fire department, what's that? I don't mind. And probably road department.
I, I, that's one of the things I added down. Road and bridge. I wrote down the developer agreement. That, it's a discussion about. And it was paying their, their share.
I'm used to that. The whole, I just understood that as part of construction. Just paid their share.
Paid their fees.
But, you know, the concern is, I mean, if you get up to a $10,000, and I don't want to talk about impact fees, because the gentleman is here that's
Yeah.
It affects, I mean, we need community housing, we need workforce housing.
Yeah.
Luckily, it's all short-term rentals, so we don't need to
That's true.
We could have all these houses sit vacant.
I mean, so there's going to have to be a balance of some, somewhere. Because we can't all be the whitetail.
We're going to see that change. We're going to see, see it not show up. See things. Subdivision has a lot of trailers. We're going to see this kind of stuff.
So does each one of those trailers have to pay $10,000? That's a tenth of what they paid for, that's more than what they paid for the trailer.
Trainers are really expensive.
You're looking? Not in one.
Inflation. Can't find one for less than 80 grand.
So those are the kinds of things we have to look at.
So I have something else to throw on the list, and I don't know how to approach this one. I was at a facility yesterday. And the guy was, he said, why don't you buy this place? I said, well, I would, but this septic tank, or the, the drain field, or that's backed up. He said, well, did you have the septic tank? I don't know where it is. So my point, that was, that was yesterday. My point is, how do we still, I'm going to call it a mandatory inspection of drain fields? I, I'm going to guess that a lot of people that buy homes in this valley that are on a drain field probably come from an area where they were on central sewer. And they, what's a septic tank? Where's my drain field?
That should be an information provided when they purchase it. If you have someone out there, let's say one of those poor folk, they have to have a mandatory inspection. They can barely pay the $300 to $500 to have it pumped every five years. I know because I pay for my sons. It costs money to get someone to go out there and inspect, and who's going to do that?
Or, or
Then there's no way to inspect a drain field.
Well, okay, so I guess my, my point is proof of that you actually have the septic tank pumped. And they inspect them, they inspect the tank when they
But they only come up every other weekend, all summer, close up the cabin. Why would they have to have it pumped every year? I think it's where, and this is what Valley's Well Water Conservation District, I know Shana Armwood was involved in this, and they were doing this education to let people know that this is what they need to do. There needs to be a campaign to educate people.
Well, that's an investment.
Realtors, the title companies, the banks should let people know when they're purchasing. I've got flyers in my office. And I can't put them on my counter anymore because it's bad.
The flyers are also on the website now.
Well, you talk about Central District Health. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. But I've wired hundreds of homes that people use three days out of the whole year. So how does that affect into that equation?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just
Five years, you know, so
Right. I'm bringing up the issue because it was ironic that yesterday, I walked in at this facility. It's not the first time this has happened.
I'd like to know at what facility. Is it a house?
Is it, do they have a CUP?
But I know what you're saying.
Name's been changed to protect the innocent. Thank you.
The, uh, and the only the only statistic we're going to get is from the people that they know my house was last year, or his son's was this year.
So I have a question for
That's why I spent my, my COVID money on someone else's septic system.
You're going to COVID, I don't get that.
It's infectious disease.
Yeah.
So, here, here's my point. And, and I think this is one of the questions we should ask Central District Health, because aren't they the overseer of the tanks? I want to know how many septic tanks there are available. They should have a record of that.
Legit ones or bootleg ones?
Well, the ones that they know about, and then there's those others.
Bootlegs around Cascade Lake.
Oh, that, they would know.
Okay, so they know, and then we have a number of people who pump septic tanks in Valley County. There's
J and R.
J and R. There's Sunny Dippers. Whoever they are. We, we have a list of who they are. I want to know how many they pump in a year. I think what, what I'm, what I'm after is, I want to, I want to start figuring out what the, what the, uh, we could do some valuation of how often some of these things are being pumped, and how many are being Well, the thing about that, too, is when you own a house and you have a septic system, which could vary in price anywhere from $5 to $30,000 for a septic system. Homeowners should see that as part of their investment, as I want to maintain this so that it continues to work, so I don't have to chunk off another $30,000 for a replacement system. Kind of like you put new tires on your car, you think about that stuff. I got to maintain this at some point. I mean, I see, I see your concern, but on the other hand, it's a, we shouldn't have to babysit them. Maybe, maybe there is a way to educate them, or maybe the septic guys are more aggressive on their marketing. Or is, or should they report who's, who they've Well, that's not a bad thought. You know, then, then there's record of, somebody got their I was thinking that maybe the, the guys that do the pumping of them should report it to Central District Health. To then line it up with ones that are out there. And then they can figure out a way that if it's used 30 days out of the year, how often they should get that out of our, our, uh, venue of oversight. But let Central District Health do their job.
What did you say, Ken? You say let Central District Health do their job?
Yeah. Do you want me to say it louder?
Well, I don't want to be in charge of all the septic systems in Valley County.
No, I don't think we should be. But I, but I think there's a, there's a misconnect, disconnect going on where either people are unaware, have no clue that they have such system, or, or they forget about it. And then there's probably some that probably pump it more often than they need to, which is also ingrains the effectiveness of I just, it's, it's an, it was an idea that. It's sort of not windshield time driving a truck.
Well, it could be a campaign.
Wasn't through that, that Spears outfit that was doing the maintenance program on their own systems. But, but they got caught not actually maintaining.
They all passed.
It seems like that would be a good idea, have a maintenance. Like that's, would be a great business.
I'll get a good laugh out of it.
But if you could get. I don't, I don't like to see government. Overregulating.
Yeah.
But. Either. In, in a sense, it would be a protection for homeowners who forgot about it or are unaware.
I think it's the realtors, they, they should educate them all.
So, good question.
And title companies.
Sasha, do you guys require that a septic tank be, uh, pumped before the land sale happens?
Um, no, it's, that's what happens, it's not required. Um, our, our standard septic, which 99% of people use, specifically call out septic, septic system inspections in the paperwork. So you have to discuss that with your client, check one of the boxes, yes or no, who's paying for it, who's responsible for it, and everybody signs it. Previous to the insanity of our current market, the general rule of thumb is you take your shit with you. It is the responsibility of the seller. And truly, that's, that's the quote. It was the responsibility of the seller to have their septic, septic system inspected and pumped and prove that to the buyer. However, with our market the way that it is, sellers now don't think they need to do anything. And they don't, they don't, if you ask for an inspection contingency, the next buyer won't require it. So, and so these buyers are just so excited to get a home that they aren't even doing the inspections. And so that's kind of where, and they're signing off on that because they know they won't get the home. And this isn't all the times that, this is a portion of what we're seeing in market right now. So, and just because it's crazy, typically, most homes have been. Systems have been inspected and pumped, almost, I would say, I would say 95% up until the last two years. So typically, most, you know, new buyers coming into our area, in my opinion, understood the need for an inspection and a pumping. And that they were required to, you know, the seller gave them proof of that, but right now, it's kind of a, it's all over the place. You may not even really get that you have a septic system, you're just so pumped you got something under contract. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
So it needs to be an education, it needs to be a campaign by Central District Health. I think Valley Soil Water Conservation District made an effort.
And I, I do think that, I think, I would say the majority of local realtors are totally informing people, these are important things, but if you ask for it, you won't get the home. That's what, I mean, in my opinion, that's what's happening. Um, however, 50% of the homes sold in our area are from Boise Realtors, and nothing against Boise Realtors, but they are not as, um. They are not as familiar with septic systems.
Right.
So.
That's also my point. And neither are the homebuyers that buy it.
They're subdivision.
It's not on their register. I think it's a good, I think it'd be a good discussion for Valley Soil and Water to have with, uh, Central District Health. And if they can figure out a way to work with the people who pump them and some sort of counting.
Why don't you wanna pursue that?
Do I? I mean, I could pull up the idea to.
Right. I don't know that I have the. I mean, I was very instrumental in, you know, the improvements to Northlake Sewer District. So that they can dump in the winter. That was my last campaign.
Which was, which is a good system.
I don't know that I can.
I'll, I'll talk.
Suzanne won't be back till next week.
I will talk with her.
Okay. You already wind this up, or you got anything else?
Who else was on the agenda?
Top plan in seventy six weeks.
Minutes to Comprehensio Plan with guidance for zoning.
Keep talking about.
Where's the agenda?
We have the subdivision.
So the, the maps showing the 40, 80, and 160 really are not pertinent anymore.
Well, they kind of are because it might guide your discussion of off-grid plots. Right, Sasha?
I think so.
Sasha's the one that asked for those, that visual display, and it just happened to work out very well for the Florida County Commissioners.
Hey, um, Cindy, are we allowed to talk about that house bill? It's for three or six, three, two, or actually?
Sure, and yes, it's a legislative matter. You guys can talk about anything you want. You can't make a decision, it's not on your agenda, maybe you shouldn't, that's kind of my thought, probably not. If we had it on the agenda.
Okay, sorry, we can bring that up, I just, I, if we could put that on, on the agenda for next, um, work session, or even for the next meeting, if we could just discuss how that. How that bill specifically kind of works into our idea of overlays and these, you know, what type of plots, I think that might be.
Are you talking about the one that Representative Gueston has proposed?
Exactly, yeah.
Right. I mean, I'll just tell you right now, all it did was replicate exceptions to the subdivision requirement. With some changes.
And then it prohibited, it prohibited the, uh, moratoriums.
Yes, and then it also changed our ability to do any sort of emergency ordinance or moratorium.
Like they did on the 160 acres.
They would prohibit that. It would prohibit us, it would have the same exceptions for everybody throughout the state. Which is the 28th parcel.
So did he do, did he do that to counter what we did?
So, yes, we will put that on the very end of our next agenda.
Thank you.
For the meeting or the work session?
Our next meeting. It, it won't be a long discussion, I don't think.
No, because I think it's dead.
I heard different.
You do think that? You know?
I've, I've heard both sides.
I have too, I've had a lot of concerned people calling.
I'll, I'll maybe know something more tomorrow.
Yeah, and.
Oh, I may not fully understand what I know tomorrow.
I don't know if I'm really gonna hear anything you say tomorrow, it'll be later.
That's true.
Be dreaming.
Maybe I can get the nurses.
I need the red phone.
When we get off of this public area, I'll tell you a story about one time. So is there, is there anything that we can do about the short-term rental stuff? In our, anything at all?
Did you say what you already done?
We've adopted a short-term rental ordinance that requires a per, an administrative permit that states they can't have over 12 people. Or a number of people based upon septic system size.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
But we cannot prohibit them.
Doesn't help the problem.
That came out of our district. That was Representative Gueston that thought that they should be permitted use in all jurisdictions.
Yeah, other than it's killing. You know, the housing, the housing market here is horrid. I really, I don't know, I feel like that's a major problem. In, in Valley County, there's gotta be something.
It, it's also, you know, it's a worldwide issue also.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's turned into a big business.
Yeah.
People will come, they wanna come to our area and rent a house and.
That's, that's great, other than they're here for two days, and then there's people that live here and work here, and they're living in the back of their pickup because there's no place to rent. And their rents are 6,000, I'm exaggerating, but.
Actually, $2,700 for a three-bedroom in McCall.
Yeah, that's actually, so Cindy, I, I saw that one, and that's a Crystal Blue Waters condo, and I knew, I could tell from the pictures which owner, so I called the guy. And I just can't believe that he'll get it, that's that he'll get it. It's crazy.
700 per night?
$2,700 a month.
Oh, for seven, for normal.
For long-term rental. For a condo, a condo. We are losing people out of the county as we speak because they no longer have a place to live.
Yep, our county's, we're, they're laying in, there are people over here. They can't afford to live here, they work.
But let's talk about those big impact fees.
Yeah. No, I just think that there's a, I know how that, this legislation got passed on short-term rental restrictions on county levels. Brought by Airbnb in Hawaii. Hey, so big money.
Oh, absolutely.
Who was the local representative that brought it forward?
He was a hired lobbyist.
Hosted by lobbyist again? I thought we had wolves, man.
So.
Tom Frost kind of owns that one. It started in Arrowhead Point.
I'm talking about the statewide law.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Because of a house in Arrowhead.
Yep. That, that was a, a number of years ago, what can we do in the future?
Yeah, the, the corporations brought it in multiple states. To protect their clients from restrictions of local government cities. Not be able to impose any.
It's just shocking that Idaho.
Incomprehensible.
I, I think that there, I, I really believe politically there is a, there is room for a adjustment. Based on certain criteria within the state. Like if you're in an area with, um. Housing. Temporary housing costs that are so much above the median of the state, drug, you know, it sets some criteria. Have some other restrictions. I think that type of legislation could actually work. Or maybe average in some of the area, or something like that.
But we have high, um, per capita income because of all the retirees and people that live here.
That's why I don't.
So we're above the charts.
I don't think I'd use it on per capita income, I think I'd base it on a median of rental rates of this state. If you're above that percentage. So that your, your affordable affordability of housing is above the state average by a certain percentage, that would qualify. That's something you could take to your legislative committee.
I mean, other states, they limit the number allowed in your jurisdiction, you can limit. You know, you can only have 30.
It'd be like liquor licenses.
Yes. I mean, Florida, I mean, some of those down in Key West and things, I mean, everything would be a short-term rental, but they've limited the number that can. I mean, you have to wait for somebody to give up their short-term rental before you can do that.
Cindy, was that something that the counties or the cities, um, just did based on the number of houses there were, and the number of like, short-term rental permits there were? Or is that something that we could look at on like, a ordinance level? All new subdivisions over 10 lots only are allowed 25% of the lots.
We can't do it in Idaho.
Cannot do it.
We can't, we can't do those Sasha and Idaho the way the Idaho law.
Only an HOA can.
Or, or you could encourage.
Yes.
That, you know, we just did that, like Running Horse is that new 13-month subdivision, and we restricted. There, there can be no short-term rentals in there.
And HOA.
And I, I really struggled with that at first, to figure out if that was going to be something where people wouldn't pay the same market rate, you know? Um, but I actually think they'll pay more.
But, but.
Because people are.
But Sasha, don't you think that the people within that subdivision like that?
Yes.
Within the HOA?
They love it. And love it, and that's. But it's only to bring a very specific type of buyer to our area, but in my opinion, those buyers contribute to the community in a greater, but very different way. Than the short-term rental market would.
And I think that would increase.
It's really, it, it really comes, kind of comes down to what we, what we, what we are starting to value.
We're gonna see more of that.
Do you, Sasha, do you think that existing HOAs would adopt that?
Doug Mount Ranch has.
Yes, Doug Mount Ranch did.
Oh, yeah, Doug Mount Ranch did, but I would, I would tell you for the most part, that was a fight, and I can't remember which one was it, out, um, out our four, um. Oh, gosh, it's, uh. One of the ones in Cascade, um, going towards Cascade before you get to Little Donner, which one was it?
Pine Lakes Ranch?
No, it's, um, or, or, I'm sorry, before Pine Lake Ranch, like closer to Donner.
Oh, Arrowhead, Arrowhead Point?
Arrowhead.
No, it was a different one, but anyways, they went, their HOA tried to impose that, and that was, I, it was pretty important, it was a few years ago.
That was Arrowhead Point, yeah.
Was it?
Yeah, it's, it's down on Leeway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was in, I thought it was a different one, but anyways, they lost, they keep, and it's very, very difficult to do, and I would tell you. A huge wave of the buyers that just bought in our valley want short-term rentals. So a lot of these initiatives have like, super majority votes, that you can make those changes with a super majority vote, and it will be tough to get, especially if the, the subdivision is, is substantially, you know, sized.
These owners are using that income.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Makes sense, that's what I would do.
Pennsylvania, yeah.
It's really interesting to like, put out there to ask HOAs to meet and discuss it, and see if they could get that super majority vote. Um, maybe, you know, maybe 30 of them in our valley could, and, and honestly, anything's gonna kind of make a difference at this point. Um, although I just see that as being like, like lawsuits just gonna be everywhere. But as long as it's within those HOA guidelines, they're allowed to do that, as long as their HOA states that you can make that change based on X vote. And, and I will say, you know, that HOAs, and they put that specifically in there, which is why they don't have a lawsuit right now.
Sasha, you turned my memory on something here, or an idea, you know, we talked about meeting with some of these other entities, county folks, DQ, whatnot. Would it be beneficial to have a discussion with the realtors?
About short-term rentals?
Oh, well, that and maybe other topics.
Um, I mean, I think, who you'd be meeting with is the board, I'm on the board, but I think that's always worthwhile, we have a pretty diverse board. Um, we tried to have somebody from each brokerage. Um, but although, actually, you know what, Ken? Our annual luncheon is coming up in April, end of April, and if there was specific, actually, we asked Cindy to talk.
Oh, what day is that, by the way?
Oh, hang on, I forgot it's here somewhere. It is. In April yet. Order directors meet, oh, no, not that one. It is, I believe it's 28. 27 through 28. I'll find out tomorrow, I can't remember.
Yeah, send me an email, please, and I'll.
Go, I will.
Lock that up.
So if we have a list of topics that we felt like as county commissioners, you know, or county commissioners that we wanted Cindy to discuss, we certainly could kind of. Ask her to, to talk about those things.
And maybe if, if, over the next few days. And maybe if if over the next few days or week or so, if you think of topics that the realtors may wanna talk with us about, it'd be a two-way exchange.
Yep.
Ideas.
Yeah, absolutely.
So hopefully, by May, we'll know if you want to recommend to the board that they hire a contract planner to take these public hearings and for public input. I mean, because it's it's quite an effort to have a bunch of public meetings. You know, especially in these times, I mean, and my history with those types of meetings is you get the same people that go to all the meetings.
We had a bunch of.
You don't get a lot of participation.
We had a bunch of them, we did West Rock.
Those were public meetings for West Rock. Uh, those weren't public meetings for a comp.
For ordinance.
You just, they really wanna understand what the heck you guys doing. That's why they're gonna show up.
They're not even gonna show up.
They're gonna wanna have something to look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's true.
Yeah, but there's only a certain part of the population that are even going to show up. You know, are all your friends gonna show up, Scott?
Uh, your friends, your red. Your beard.
I mean, they just don't, so then you have to get this contractor to take him to his friends. I mean, when we did it before, we went to basketball games and handed out surveys, we stood at grocery stores, we, you know, it was like.
That's where you come in.
And it was still the same people, the same seven people went to all the meetings and testified.
And that actually.
So.
I think we have a larger contingent at this time just because of how fast our market's growing and the price points and I think we'd have a bit more, but I think you're right, I think it's tough.
Yeah, with COVID and that contractor, they could send out surveys, they could do all that stuff.
Hundred grand though?
One hundred.
Two hundred?
The Waterways Management Plan's a hundred and twenty-five, I think.
Wrong business. Yeah, I'd like, I don't know how we could get it, but I'd like to get input that. I think true concerns are.
Well, I asked.
Seem kind of vague.
Well, they will be until after March or September.
On May seventeenth?
No, well.
When the primary's over.
Well, I will ask them to be more specific.
Or if you decide me tomorrow.
I have a new commissioner.
We do.
We did, do we know who's running, I thought, well, I thought it's not till March fifteenth that we'll know exactly who's running. Is that right?
Yeah, but Mr. Benjamin is resigning at the end of the month.
Oh, is that official?
Yeah.
Everybody knows about it, but they just wanna know it's official.
Yeah, I didn't know it was official.
He announced it at the meeting. He's taking his spot over the Democratic Senate. Support three names to the governor, the governor picks one of them.
They gotta come up with three. Or else they take mine.
Okay, you're running. You want that spot?
You're running, you?
Yes.
Did you declare it?
You didn't know that?
So it's public.
You positioned it, but I didn't know if that was official either.
I had Joanna, his daughter, sign my deal this.
I I signed hers yesterday too.
You signed hers?
After her.
Yeah.
So you gotta decide before I did.
Me and my wife both signed Joanna's.
Uh?
Who did you sign?
My daughter, Joanna's.
Oh, that's awesome, I didn't know she was running it either, that's great.
She's running her treasure. Oh, oh, because she was hired in there.
If you showed up tonight, I'd had you sign mine.
Ah, all right.
We are still recording.
You have to have them out of your district, right? Many of those that getting out of your.
Yeah, so are we done talking about planning and zoning?
I think so.
So we will try to get specifics from the board about all of the comments they're getting, besides the obvious David Glibly and Larry Shake, the ones that have submitted the the letters.
I think it'd be good for all of us to have some of that.
So, do you think, so at our next work session, we will go through the rest of this chart? This is kind of the plan. And then I would like to have a significant discussion about the makers.
And we will also be going through the Local Land Use Planning Act and the Comprehensive Plan.
So maybe maybe before our next meeting, we could read the comp plan and see if there's anything that. So give us our homework assignment before the next meeting. You can email it or.
Sure.
Whatever.
Sorry, I want you to remind me, homework, okay. No, I'll tell you, I'm trying to get the staff packets done tomorrow. I have a, I have to go to the Hayett Sewer District meeting at noon. Because I'm going to the basketball game, I don't care what any of you say.
There you go.
It's priorities, right?
That's important.
It is.
Could I get another comp plan, I think I might.
You want a comp plan?
I have the new one too.
I'll include it in your packet.
And next meeting is extremely big.
Probably like two meetings ago.
This one's worse.
Yeah, this has more items.
It's got, it's the type of items on it that we can't talk about here.
No, you're still on.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, we're done.
Okay.
We're adjourned, Sasha.
Thank you.